Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, January 15th Business Meeting of the Olympia City Council. For the record, council met earlier this evening for a joint meeting with the Olympia School District at 5:30. No decisions were made. As well, for the record, we have a quorum with Councilmember Cooper excused. At this time, under announcements, I would like to invite our Strategic Communications Director, Kelly Persbrasseth, to come up to the podium and give us an update on our homeless response actions. This is something that we are going to start doing regularly so that we can share updates with our community in a timely manner. As well, I encourage you to check out our website, olympia-wa.gov. There's a homelessness tab right there on the landing page, and you can sign up for email updates as well. So, Kelly?
Thank you, Mayor Selby, council members. Again, it's always good to be up here with you. I wanted to, I've got a couple of things I want to hit to let you know what's going on. Latest updates around the mitigation site. You guys got a chance to tour that on Saturday. Since that time, Phase 2 of the site has begun, and approximately 33 additional tents have been added to the site since Saturday. At 9:00 a.m. this morning, staff began checking in folks into those spaces, and currently there are 115 guests at the site, and the site is full. I'd like to take just a hot second here. One of the things we want to do is make sure we address rumors that are going around when we can. One that keeps cropping up is about which site is the mitigation site, which is the unmanaged, unsanctioned site. You know, we're hearing from residents, they're driving down State Street, and they see kind of the chaos of the unmanaged site on State and Franklin, and they're alarmed and confused and think that's the mitigation site. That is not the mitigation site for the viewing public. That is actually what the mitigation site is mitigating against. So, just so you can see, the site on the left is the mitigation site. The site on the right is the unmanaged site that people pass on State. So you see that. So there's a stark difference, distinction, as you can see. Our goal is to clear the unsanctioned site on State Street as soon as possible and return the parking lot to its intended use. Moving on to what's going on in B Street, that's also of interest to the community. Oh, okay, turn off. There you go. Thank you. The campers on B Street were offered a place at the mitigation site today. Those that remain on B Street are those that decline to go to the site. A lot will be using B Street as part of their construction work they have underway, so there's going to be some heavy trucks and equipment on that, on B Street, and it is not going to be a safe place to camp. The city staff will be giving notice this week to those still camping on B Street, and the encampment will be cleared next week to make it safe for construction, safe for the workers, and safe for the campers as well. We've also heard from the public about what's going on, the encampments under the Fourth Avenue Bridge. We've been hearing about it from residents with questions and concerns. The city is aware of those encampments and is also concerned. We're feeling confident that focusing on improving the situation in the core of downtown with the mitigation site, with the opening of Plum Street Village, and bringing more 24/7 shelters online, we'll be able to, we'll have the needed shelter options available to address the bridge encampment soon. So, we're hoping all that happens. Plum Street Village, all 29 tiny homes are on the site. On Thursday, January 17th, Lehigh will be holding another informational meeting for the public at the Olympia Center at 6:00 p.m. On January 31st, Lehigh will be hosting an open house for the public at the site from 3:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. So please take a look, come and see the site yourself. The first week of February, folks will be starting to move in. Many of the first wave of residents will come from the mitigation site, so that will free up more space at the site for folks to move in. And then finally, I'd like to tell you just a little bit of good news, a success with our Familiar Faces program. LPD's Familiar Faces program is new, but it's already changing people's lives in really positive ways. Recently, the Familiar Faces Peer Navigators connected with someone who's been unsheltered and really suffering in our community for a long time. He's disabled, he's vulnerable on the streets, and he's struggling with addiction. Our fire and police department have frequent interactions with him. He's been a frequent user of their services. The peer navigators with Familiar Faces were able to build a relationship with him over the last few weeks, and working with the peers and others, he's worked out a path to sobriety. And he has been able to enroll in a long-term inpatient treatment center in Spokane. And to make sure he got there safely and enrolled safely, one of our peers personally drove him to Spokane, stayed in a hotel with him, and got him all checked in, made sure he was there safe and sound, and they are, they are ready to support him in his treatment, support him when he returns to our community, and I just want to say we all wish him well in his recovery.
Great news, Kelly. Yeah, that deserves a round of applause. You can clap for announcements. All right, thanks for that update. And like I said, those will be regularly happening on our business meetings every week, and you can check out other updates as they occur on our website. So I need a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved?
Second.
All favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? We have an approved agenda. We have one item for special recognition this evening, and that is a proclamation recognizing human trafficking awareness, and I'm going to go ahead and read that proclamation now. "Whereas human trafficking is a form of modern-day slavery and involves the use of force, fraud, or coercion to obtain some type of labor or commercial sex act from a victim, and whereas the International Labor Organization estimates that there are 20.9 million victims of human trafficking globally, and 20% are women, and Polaris estimates that there are hundreds of thousands in the U.S., and whereas due to its isolating nature and the misinterpretation of its definition, many individuals across the globe are unaware trafficking exists in their neighborhoods and in America. And whereas Washington State was one of the first states to pass anti-trafficking legislation in 2003, and has been at the forefront of states in ending human trafficking, and whereas Human Trafficking Awareness and Prevention Month was established to proclaim the equality and freedom inherent to all people, to advocate for legislation and protection for survivors, to educate leaders, and to encourage public awareness and action against various forms of human trafficking. And whereas increased education about how to identify and prevent human trafficking, along with improved victim identification, utilization of survivor services, and increased public awareness are all critical to ending trafficking. And whereas fighting human trafficking is a shared responsibility and will take each of us doing our part, we urge all Washington citizens to educate themselves about all forms, signs, and consequences of human trafficking, and to work together to end this most serious, ongoing, human rights violation. And now therefore be it resolved that the Olympia City Council does hereby proclaim January 2019 as Human Trafficking Awareness and Prevention Month. Signed in the City of Olympia, Washington, this 15th day of February 2019, Olympia City Council Cheryl Selby, Mayor." And I would like to invite Fiona? Is that, yes? Great. Did you want to make a statement? I'll, I'm going to give you the, let me give you the signed proclamation here really quick.
Hi, I'm Fiona, and I am from Thurston County Coalition Against Trafficking, TCAT for short. TCAT wants to engage with other organizations that serve the vulnerable in our community. We are hosting a partnering conversation to deepen relationships so that we can partner effectively to prevent human trafficking in our community. We are going to have this on January 31st, and it starts at around 5:30. We're going to have refreshments, but the program actually starts at 6:00, and it's going to be in the Education Service District 113, next to Tumwater Costco. I left a few flyers outside, and also a sign-in sheet if you guys want more information. I left the spreadsheet out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Fiona, for your advocacy. All right, we are on to tonight's agenda item of public comment, and we've got quite a large crowd, so I'm going to go ahead and read the rules because there's a lot of new faces in here. During this portion of the meeting, citizens may address the city council regarding items related to city business, including items on tonight's agenda. If you've signed up on one of these sheets, I'm going to assume that you've read the policies regarding public comment. A few highlights is that we do not allow comments on agenda items for which the city council either held a public hearing in the last 45 days, or is planning to do so in the next 45 days, and those were listed out there at the signup sheet. Individual comments are limited to three minutes or less, and time is not transferable amongst speakers. I have a countdown clock over my right shoulder. Our fire chief wants me to remind our guests tonight that we need to keep the aisles and the doorways open. So I believe Greg is here in the back, and so if he comes and taps you on the shoulder, just be gracious and move to where he asks you to go, because we don't want to have any kind of emergency where we can't get everybody out safely. So in order to hear from as many people as possible during the 30 minutes set aside for public communication, we're going to refrain from commenting on individual remarks until comment has been completely given, and I'll plan on calling out three names at a time, and you can stage yourselves over here. As chair, I can choose to reorder the list so that people that haven't addressed the council in the last 30 days get a chance to be heard, hopefully in the first 30 minutes. We've got about 20-some people signed up, so there's no way you're all going to fit in the first 30. The city council will allow additional comments at the end of our regular business meeting. We ask that this chamber be a space that supports respectful listening, so I'm asking that there be no outbursts from the audience. That's just a key rule during public comments. It's different than other parts of our business meeting, and that's because sometimes people are coming up and saying things that you may not agree with, but if you agree or you disagree with them, that's not fair. Everybody needs to be able to say what they want to say without fear of being disrespected from the audience, and every viewpoint deserves a safe and gracious platform. That's what we try to provide. So I am going to start off, there's many people that have spoken the last 30 days, so I'm going to skip through a little bit. I've got Warren Myers, followed by James Wellings, followed by Reverend Carol Johnson. And if you can come up here, is Warren Myers here? Warren? All right. James? It's Warren. Or is that a Wanda? Yes, I'm sorry. I didn't hear what you said. You didn't look like a Warren, so. All right. Is it Wanda?
Yes.
Okay, Wanda Myers, followed by James Wellings, followed by Reverend Carol Johnson.
Okay. My name is Wanda Myers, and I live at Boardwalk Apartments on Capitol Way between Thurston and B Streets. The downtown area in particular, near the transit station and on B Street between Washington and Franklin Streets, have become an increasing concern about the ever-growing population of homelessness in our area. The one encampment that is on B Street between Washington and Franklin is only about 50 feet from the northeast corner of one of the Boardwalk buildings. People that live on that corner see it from their windows. Our residents that walk down Washington to the market are walking just across the street from this filthy site. Some of the seniors at Boardwalk don't get company coming to visit because people are afraid of the neighborhood. Now they are nearing the end of their lives this way, looking out their windows at a hopeless homeless population. It isn't fair. Who thought this was a good idea? There are homeless people coming and going in all directions on the streets near the transit center and other businesses seniors walk to. There are also Boardwalk residents that have to go out in the middle of the night to take their dogs out, talk about dangerous. We hear some of the mentally ill homeless walking right outside our buildings at night, yelling out foul language, as well as arguing or going through dumpsters. Some are yelling in the night because of their mental illness, and they are trying to shout down the voices in their heads. They are not getting help that they need. At times, people sleep up against our buildings behind bushes. They also leave garbage and things behind. We lay in our beds, listening to these sounds around us. It isn't that myself and others at Boardwalk don't care about the homeless. Quite the contrary. Many contribute to Union Gospel Mission, as well as knit hats and scarves for the homeless. Conversations sometimes are about how sad and hopeless-looking their lives are. It is not fair to senior citizens, or any people for that matter, to look out the windows of their homes, condos, or apartments and have homeless in our faces. People that have worked hard all their lives, paid taxes, been responsible citizens, should not have to look out their windows into the faces of a growing homeless population. Life brings us many challenges to deal with in our lives. When any of us are at home, we should find it to be our sanctuary, the one place we can just live our life and get away from the problems of this world. Please stop bringing problems into our faces. They are stressing our lives and jeopardizing our already declining health and minds, bringing to us problems in need of a solution.
James Wellings, followed by Reverend Carol Johnson.
Hi, my name's James Wellings. I want to thank you for this opportunity. I've been in this town a very long time. First time I got up here, I talked about emotional sobriety, coping skills, communication skills, critical thinking skills. There's been a stabbing recently, and I was there right after it happened. I know that's unnerving. I want people to be able to shop downtown and not be afraid. I know it's unnerving when somebody's talking to themselves. There's a movie I want you to see. It's called Crazy Wise. It's a documentary. I want you to see this movie. It's about people who have voices in their head. I want you to see this movie, and here's why, because it's not a moral issue. Most people who have voices in their head are harmless, way over 90%. Crazy Wise. Now, what I've been trained to do is to, every day, look in the mirror and take my own inventory before I take other people's. I'm still working on that, trust me on that. Here's what I want. I want rent control. I want rent control for everyone, and I mean business owners, I mean homeless people. I want everybody to put their thoughts aside, and their judgmentalism, and their resentments, and all these other things that get in the way of us solving the problem. I also want people to pick up their stuff, and I mean everybody. I walk these streets a lot, I see all sorts of things. And again, I've been in this town a very long time, extremely long. I know that I look like a cross between Sean Penn and Dobie Gillis and Owen Wilson, but I dropped off a resume today, and I used to be homeless. I was homeless for a very long time, and I did it by choice. Me, I did. I was sick and tired of having roommates that just caused grief for me, right? Well, I'm not homeless now, and I've had a lot of help, and I'm willing to pay that back. Thanks for letting me share.
Thank you. Reverend Carol Johnson, followed by Peter Cook.
My name is Carol Johnson, a retired United Methodist pastor. I'm a longtime resident. They tell me I moved here in 1954, but I don't remember. I graduated from Olympia High School in '72, and I'm a member of First United Methodist Church of Olympia's Justice and Advocacy Team. I am speaking tonight in support of the city's mitigation site and our community's support of the creation of options for unsheltered residents of our community. I volunteer with Just Housing and bring food and clothing on Monday nights at the unregulated encampment in the parking lot. I agree with the concern of many that the encampment is difficult to look at with tarps, tents, and stuff. It is that way because that is what misery and suffering looks like. This is what extreme poverty and struggle to survive looks like. Rather than sweeping the encampments, we need to help empower individuals to have real choices for their housing options. The question is, how can we work together to alleviate the human suffering? They are human beings, brothers and sisters, moms and dads, aunts and uncles, and children of people who live in our community. They live lives of alienation and desperation, yet they survive one day at a time. I support forging ahead to complete the Plum Street tiny house site, maintain the current mitigations, and then support the faith tiny homes, and create a new mitigation site somewhere in our community. We must not abandon our progress thus far and merely kick people out of downtown with no places to go. We must acknowledge the struggle of downtown business owners and increase our support for them. I am not sure how that happens, but we simply must listen and forge solutions as a community. Every time I go downtown to volunteer, I am welcomed with thanks, love, and community from the people. I am blessed by them. I urge all of you to reach out and meet them. Let it be known that the citizens of Olympia work together and live together in peace. It seems to me that we are children of God, all children of God, however we name God, whether we believe or not. My understanding is that we are called to love and care for one another. That's what my mama taught me, and I'm always going to do that.
I think you heard me. All right, I've got Peter Cook, followed by Nancy Yorger, followed by Robert Coit.
Hey, thank you, Mayor and council members, people I've seen down at Plum Street Site working on the tiny houses there. I represent the United Churches of Olympia, also newly-formed Faith Alliance Initiative for Tiny Houses in Olympia, and I'm also, we're also a member of the Downtown Association, and we support that association. We know that homelessness is a big visible issue here in Olympia, but we also know that we're all citizens of Olympia, and we are supporting all the actions that the city council is taking right now. I think you're making success on the mitigation site issue on the Plum Street Village. There's a lot more to do in terms of affordable housing. We want to see that, too. And now we're going to have tiny house facilities probably in faith communities very soon with a partnership of the city, and we appreciate that very much. But there's a lot more to do. There's a lot more, and we have to keep moving to do it. We want to see a viable downtown Olympia, both for, well, for all the citizens, the businesses, and the churches like us, and we just need to do it more as a community together, and with respect for all of our citizens. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Got Nancy Yorger, followed by Robert Coit, followed by Ty Gundle.
My name is Nancy Yorger. I'm 28 years old, and I'm a mentally ill recovering IV drug user who lost half her life to the streets and addiction. I'm also a four-time convicted felon who spent 14 months on Department of Corrections supervision, and that is ultimately what saved my life and helped me get my life back on track. I owe everything to this city and its law enforcement. Not to rehab, not to some toxic waste and crime-ridden homeless camp, and not to these so-called safe injection sites, which, mind you, studies show don't even bring down mortality rates. Tough love and being held accountable for my actions saved my life, and that is what people like me need. We need to be held accountable because that is the only way we will ever learn. And if people are not held accountable for their actions, how else will we ever learn? Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to ask, this is exactly what I was saying, there's going to be people speaking on both sides of this issue, and we need it feel safe for everybody to come up here. It takes a lot of courage to come up here, especially in front of this many people on camera. So please, I know that you're excited about some certain comments, but we need to keep it quiet for everybody. Thank you. I've got Ty Gundle, followed by Jackie Barrett, followed by Jeremy Scott. Oh, I'm sorry, I reordered. Yeah, Robert, and then Robert Coit, followed by Ty Gundle. Sorry, thank you.
Thanks for not forgetting about me, Mayor. So my name's Robert Coit. I'm the executive director of the Thurston County Food Bank. I do live in the unincorporated parts of Thurston County, far outside the urban growth areas of any of the three major jurisdictions. I marked neutral on the box because I'm torn in half. I am torn. Our entire service model is based on one simple concept: access. Access to food. Anyone, regardless of the sector, their circumstances, where they live, whether they have a house, a tent, it does not matter. I honestly believe we can end hunger one day at a time by providing food to everyone in a way that's just and fair to everyone. And when access is compromised, I can't further our mission. So it concerns me when I hear a senior say they don't feel safe coming to the food bank, or someone living in an encampment feeling it's hard to walk two blocks because they feel harassed. That's why I'm torn. I don't have any opposition to the mitigation site, nor am I against or in favor of the site across the street, but for heaven's sakes, help me make sure our doors are open to everyone, whether it's at our downtown site, the sites we support in the rural communities in Rainier and Tenino. People have to have access to food, and I implore you to help us find a way forward that does that. I don't have any easy answers for you. This is a complicated problem, but I at least am willing to help you find solutions and answers to make sure people have the services they need. But man, my staff are struggling, the volunteers that come are struggling, my board is struggling, I am struggling. This issue is tearing us apart. We have got to find a way forward as a community, and it can't be just Olympia. Please help us find a way forward. We need strong leadership, and we look to you first. Thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you. I've got Ty, sorry, I had to reorder her. Ty Gundle, followed by Jackie Barrett.
An old Cherokee is teaching his grandson about life. A fight is going on inside of me, he said to the boy. It is a terrible fight between two wolves. One is evil. He is anger, sorrow, greed, arrogance, self-pity, guilt, resentment, false pride, superiority, and ego. He continued, the other is good. He is joy, peace, love, hope, humility, kindness, empathy, generosity, truth, compassion, and faith. The same fight is going on inside you and inside every other person, too. The grandson thought about it for a minute, and then asked his grandfather, which wolf will win? The old Cherokee simply replied, the one you feed. As I experience what is happening in our community, it's hard not to think of the story and all the times throughout history that we have seen this struggle play out, and all the times we've seen what happens when we allow that first wolf to win. We ask ourselves how we keep letting the injustices of history repeat. I think we only need to look around us and within ourselves to find the answer. Personally, I don't believe it's about people being bad or evil. I believe it's about fear, fear of what we do not know, fear of change, fear of loss, fear of who we love hurting. This type of fear makes us angry, it makes us desperate, it hurts our ability to listen, to understand, to find room for compassion, patience, and love. The people surviving on our streets are our neighbors. They are not outsiders or invaders. The vast majority are people who have been surviving in the shadows of our community for years. Last year, the point in time census counted 835 people homeless in our community. There are less than half of that number downtown, and nowhere near that many shelter beds. We're not seeing things like this for the first time because it's new. We're seeing things like this for the first time because a court decision made it allowable for the first time in years for this group of our neighbors to be visible. But even if the majority of people were coming from elsewhere because they heard that there was something better in Olympia, why would this be so bad? People across time have journeyed across borders looking for something better. The Olympia I love strives to be that haven, is committed to a charter of compassion, is a sanctuary city. It doesn't see being a haven for the most marginalized as being a bad thing, or find safety in pushing and keeping those most in need out. So how in times of hardship do we find the strength to feed the other wolf? The first night I spent volunteering at a shelter I didn't sleep because I was too afraid. Nothing happened to make me feel unsafe, but the fear that I felt was real. Nonetheless, I came back, and I honestly don't think I ever had a night there where I slept. But eventually, the reasons changed. I wasn't staying awake because I was afraid. I was staying awake because I was spending every night listening, talking to, and learning from the people staying there. Where at first there was fear, I was able to find compassion, understanding, love, beauty, and hope. That's how I... That's how I do it. The sooner we stop trying to figure out who is deserving and who is not, who is us and who is not, who is bad and who is good, the sooner we're going to pull through this and find ourselves in a better place. There's nothing wrong with accountability, but we have to be ready to hold ourselves accountable, too, for how we treat one another and our choices and choosing which wolf we feed. Thank you.
Thank you. I've got Jackie Barrett, followed by Jeremy Scott, followed by Briann Feeney.
My goal tonight is to bring awareness to our issues in our community that I feel are being swept under the rug. I feel the city council is failing us as a community. I am a single mother, a business owner here in Olympia. I opened my salon back in May 2014, and I have grown up in this community, and in the last two years have watched it crumble. I understand the logistics of what it takes to conquer the issues we are facing, but I feel our city has forgotten something very important. Our constitution begins with the phrase "we the people." It was the founders' intent that the government be created by the people to serve the people. It wasn't their intent for the people to serve the government. That leads me into what a lot of us are wondering, and that is if the city council is remotely concerned with the safety of our community. This last Thursday, the 10th of January, there was a stabbing in the parking lot in front of my salon. The drug activity, homeless presence, panhandling issues have been prominent in the last few years. And for me, this hit way too close to home. As I walked this parking lot with my three-year-old, my 11-year-old, my clients, my elderly clients, people that are coming to get a service, contributing to our economy, and they're not safe. They're scared, which directly affects all of us and all of our businesses. For me, I keep up on our community reading things the city has implemented and what is working and what is non-working. And one of the subjects I came across was the zero-tolerance zones. And my question for you guys this evening is where exactly are these zones? And how are our police officers supposed to enforce them when they've been ordered to stand down from the homeless? This issue has produced what we are becoming known for on a national level, and that is what is the main component that is attracting what we're experiencing in the Pacific Northwest. Marysville has implemented "accept help or go to jail," and it's a two-pronged approach, as many people in here I'm sure know, to either take the option for help or go to jail if there's a law being broken. As of December 7, 2018, 40 people have completed detox, 19 have graduated treatment, and 37 have acquired housing. Marysville has also put soda into play, which is stay out of drug areas. An example, people with a history of drugs are prohibited from certain areas. It also includes embedding social workers to ride along with our law enforcement, which helps people not feel intimidated. It gives our officers an opportunity to learn about the programs that our community is providing for them. And it also has created a 20% dip in crime in Marysville since 2017. So a lot of us are questioning why the city Olympia isn't jumping on this bandwagon of an already implemented and working solution.
Thank you. Thank you. Jeremy Scott, followed by Briann Feeney.
Good evening, council members and mayor. My name is Jeremy Scott. I am one of the people they always talk about at Tent City. We feel over at Tent City, people call us animals. They call us savages. People take pictures of us like we're a wild circus. But there's love over there. There's family over there. A lot of people that came downtown, I've been downtown Olympia for 28 years. When I first came down here, we used to go to the center over here to play basketball. All the, you know, I mean, the little kids. That's when life was good. Now, it's like, everybody's talking about the homeless. Well, you got to understand, the middle class is a dollar away from being homeless. And here we got the homeless. So if we can't fix the bottom, it's just going to keep happening. And we all owe the city of Olympia a responsibility. We feel like, as homeless, we feel like we're getting the short end in the bag, even though it's our own responsibilities that got us in that position. But here we are. We still live in a great city. When I look at the well, what do you see when you look at the well beside water? You see the color black. Black is not a color. It's an emotion. Now, look at the other side of Fourth Ave, where they got the Olympia of Peace and Love. That's the most photographic picture we have in Olympia. Reason why more people go over there now? Because they feel safe. It's colorful, and it represents Olympia. This new Tent City. It's okay, but we can do better. And reason why I say that is because when we're dealing with a mental issue, addiction issue, a safety issue, we really got to look at it to the point of we're taking all these people from one tent to another one. Here's a mental, here's a mental issue. Those people are going to go crazy, and then we're going to have a bigger problem. I say to say, again, we all owe Olympia, you know what I mean, a different alternative than going from a tent to a tent. I feel like there's 5,000 marijuana farms in the state of Washington. We can take all that trim, compress it, because it's 10 times stronger than regular wood, save a tree, and also save the taxpayers' money, and every person that's homeless living in cars they're not accounted for can have a house. Thank you, guys, for your time.
Briann Feeney, followed by Tamara Smith.
I wanted to address the room with my first statement. No matter what your background is or what your thoughts are on the homeless crisis, I think there's something that every single one of us in this room can agree on, and that's that we want a safe community. I don't see anybody shaking their head no. I feel like we're all in agreement.
Ms. Feeney, during public comment is to address the city council, so I'm going to ask you to face us and engage with us.
We want a safe community. As a member of this community, a taxpayer, and a mother, I expect and I demand that if someone in my city commits a crime, that they are charged and prosecuted for that crime accordingly. It is against the law to defecate in public, to expose yourself and to use illegal substances, and yet I do not see arrests being made. I just called 911 three weeks ago because a man exposed himself to me and was bearing down, trying to defecate in front of me and in front of businesses. He flashed everybody inside, and as I watched from my parking stall as the police arrived, he merely got a conversation and walked away. My children and I have come out of the children's museum to find heavily intoxicated transients surrounding my vehicle and peering into my windows. I had another transient jump jump into my daughter's car window while it was rolled down, being very aggressive. My daughter developed a severe anxiety disorder and has been in therapy ever since. I know this has always been a crisis. Then we have to start actually treating homelessness like the emergency that it is. I realize that this issue is not new and not something that is easy. And as citizens, we realize that. However, holding all people accountable for their unlawful actions is simple. If someone commits a crime, there should not be any reason why our police officers cannot make arrests. We are enabling this problem without having any accountability. Thank you for your continued efforts to try to find solutions, but I strongly urge you to hold everyone accountable for their actions.
Thank you. Tamara Smith, followed by Mullen.
Good evening. My name is Tamara Smith. I have a simple question, and that is, where do you sleep? When you leave this evening, this council-city meeting, most likely you will go home, try to have some dinner, do your nightly rituals, spend time with your loved ones, go upstairs, pull back your sheets, pull back your comforters, put on your pajamas, and climb into your bed. There are so many who are wondering if their tarp is going to hold if it's windy tonight, if it won't rain, if the rock is close by or that stick in case somebody unzips their tent. I'm thankful for the mitigation. I'm thankful for the tiny homes. I'm a military wife. I've been in five different towns where I volunteered in different places. The longest stint was two years in Anchorage, where I was director of a shower house. You wouldn't believe what we were able to do with the amount of money with a foreclosed home. A foreclosed home. Two showers, two washer and dryers, and a couch. We were able to get 10 men and women in and allow them to shower, get some fresh clothes, socks, wash, shave, allow them to get some clean clothes on so they could go out and do interview skills and hopefully land a job. Some of them got out of their homelessness, their displacement. Some of them land post office jobs. I don't know what the answer is. I'm just asking, where do you sleep and how far is it from where they sleep? Thank you.
Thank you. I've got Mullen, followed by Phoenix Went, and that's all we can have time for in the first 30 minutes.
Hello. Okay. I would like to thank you all for holding this meeting. And to quote that old truism, like, speak even if your voice shakes. I would like to remind everyone that a truth that cannot be denied is that we're all connected, and when another person is suffering, we're all suffering. So it would benefit us all to uplift and support people living unhoused. It could really happen to anyone. One of my friends, one of my dear friends and roommates works at the Interface Shelter, and a lot of their stories from the people that stay there are somebody was married and their husband died, and they had nothing. Or they left in an abusive situation. They had nothing. Things like that. I think it's inhumane and cruel to blame people who are victims of violence for their trauma. And I urge you all, when you go home tonight and as you're trying to fall asleep, think what it would be like if you were sleeping in the woods during those long brutal storms we've been having. And I urge you to ask yourself, when you're falling asleep, what would you want for your own child or your mother or your father or somebody dear to you? Would you want to build understanding and compassion and sustainable support networks or to allow people to continue suffering and dying? I would like to urge people who have money and are not insecure about how to pay for their basic needs to consider starting a fund to create more options for people experiencing homelessness. Try to redistribute your wealth. It's a radical idea, but like, let's be real, like, we're all connected. And like, do you want to create a world where people are literally like imprisoned and like have violence inflicted on them? Or do you want like people to be safe and have some healing? We only have like one life to live, and I just want you all to search your hearts for empathy and compassion. And maybe talk to somebody on the street who's experiencing homelessness. Like, it's really scary when you see somebody like defecating. That's kind of scary when you see somebody doing that. No one really wants to see that, but like, you could walk away or like ask somebody nearby, "Do you want to help this person get to pipe or to the CCC?" Something like that. I don't think criminalizing people is a good solution at all. Thank you for your time and your consideration, and I hope you all consider these thoughts. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Phoenix Went.
Hi. Lisa, Renata, and so many others, Clark, thank you for being here. And I'm going to say it this way. Normally, I would be saying, "Look, this is what I would like to have happen." But I'm going to say it to you guys. This is the one rare time. You guys actually opened up a mitigation camp and many other tiny house villages. I want to say to you, thank you. Thank you all for hearing the cries of our houseless so far and allowing for the very things that is to help our horrible need is starting to get met. And I thank you for helping us. It is amazing and it is joy that you guys are doing so. Number two, I wanted to also say very clearly, this is a new year. We need to have, instead of sadness, instead of fear, instead of feeling like our safety is constantly underneath threat, we don't need that. No. I'd much rather have, as the prior young person said, "There is a beautiful mural. It has rainbows." This is supposed to be a sanctuary city, a rainbow city, a joyous city. It is so beautiful here. I want my Olympia back. I want to see beauty and joy. I don't want to see the sadness and the fear. I want to see love, compassion, and let us not forget that we are all one and together. And I will say it this way. All we have to do, instead of fighting each other, can we have an open hand? Can we work together? Yes, you may have concerns of safety. Yes, you may have concerns of funding. You may have concerns about a lot of other stuff. But if you were, as a community, working as one to address these concerns, then can we keep our hands open? So again, thank you for addressing our concerns and for coming to help us in our great need. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the first 30 minutes that we have set aside for public comment. Council refrains from making comments back until we've heard from all the speakers. So at this point, we are going to go to our consent calendar. It's very short. So we have about 10 more people, oh, about seven or eight more people. So you shouldn't have to wait too long. All right, I need a motion to approve tonight's consent calendar.
So moved.
Second. Any questions, comments, or polls? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, consent calendar passes. And since we do not have a public hearing or another business agenda item tonight, we're going to go back to public comment, just like that. All right, that's a formality. All right, so I just heard from the 13th, I'm going to invite Mike Partial, followed by Will Groff.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm here today just because I heard about the Pacific Coast Security Network. They were hired by a group of business owners to harass the homeless community about a month ago. And I asked the city council to stand up for these, to stand up against, you know, the business tyrants and to support, you know, the homeless people. You shouldn't, there shouldn't be a lot, you know, you can't just have a security network just coming and sweeping people off the street. I want the city council to stand up those people, and I just also want to express support for the mitigation site and the tiny houses. Thank you.
Thank you. I have got, let's see, sorry. Will Groff, followed by Walker Stevens.
Hi. Um, I'm a longtime Olympia resident and it's the first time I've come to talk here. I just wanted to say that I urge all of you to think deeply and try and find some compassion for the people on the street. There's so many instances in which just a couple of uh, of steps that you could take where you might find yourself in that situation. It's a situation that nobody wants to be in. And um, also I'd like you to really think about if if you were trying to build a place to live in a parking lot, do you think with very few resources, do you, and no place to like dump your trash or anything like that? Do you think it's just gonna be, it look pretty out of, out of nothing with very few resources? It's gonna, it's gonna be messy and it's not gonna look perfect. But tho- those are people who are trying to survive any way that they can. And um, maybe if you offered some more resources for these people to build more structurally sound houses or um, shacks, um, it might look better. Or if you offered some uh, some like guidance on how to build those, those shelters, maybe people could um, help themselves build um, small houses instead of having them just be done for them. I'm sure a lot of people would be completely into that idea of, of building shelters for themselves. I'd also like to address the PCS and urge you, urge the city to cut all ties with them and their harassment of, of homeless people downtown. Yeah, that's all I've gotta say. I just, um, it's, I understand like safety concerns, but you really have to think about um, how hard it is to live on the streets and, and think about those people. Thanks.
Thank you. I've got Walker Stevens followed by John Pettit.
Hello, city council. Um, my name is Walker. I'm really just sitting here listening to what everybody's saying, people that I agree with and disagree with, um, and realizing that we're all coming from a really strong place of compassion and I'm really excited about um, this room full of people that who really care about our community. I grew up in this community. I care deeply about it. I know everyone in this room does and that's amazing. Uh, I run a holiday, uh, every December for the last four years, I run a wreath stand that employs homeless people to make and sell um, Christmas wreaths. And this year we are set up inside the Tent City in the Smart Lot, um, next to the Transit and Billy Frank Center. So that's, uh, for me, it's a full-time commitment, seven days a week. I'm there full-time. Uh, and that put me, I, I have a lot of insights about that camp that I don't think um, e- even city employees don't, don't really spend that much time in. Uh, so first, I just wanna acknowledge something that you all know, I'm sure, is the incredible diversity of people experiencing homelessness. There's young people, there's old people, there's people who've been on the streets for years and years, there's people who've been on the streets for a day. Everybody has very different challenges, very different needs, and any solutions that lump everybody into one aren't, they're, they're not real solutions, right? But the, in this range, oh, uh, there's, there's, well, I'm gonna skip a bunch of stuff. There's a lot of um, really bad behavior, really antisocial behavior, violent behavior, predatory behavior. Um, and I think that is very apparent. When, when one person out of ten is, is going crazy, then it kinda looks like everybody's going crazy, right? Uh, and, and first of all, I wanna say that's not true. Not everybody's um, a danger. Uh, also, the people that, the, when people are dangerous, the people that they're being most dangerous to is other marginalized people on the street. If, if um, a homeowner or business owner comes down sign and sees somebody flipping out, that's a really scary thing to see. That's also a really scary thing to have to camp next to. That's a really scary thing to have to live next to. And on the flip side of that, is something that I don't think gets talked about, which is there are some really, really, really amazing acts of good deeds in these camps. There's people who are disabled to the point they can't leave their tents. And who's taking care of them? It's other homeless people bringing them food. That I've seen people ripping apart shirts out of the dumpster to swipe out the porta potty for somebody else's mess, you know? I've seen a guy named Jesse spend two days shoveling up and, and, and just full eight-hour workdays cleaning up some campsites that weren't even his because he was in tears saying, I'm sick of people thinking that we're animals. Um, so I know we're out of time and I actually have some ideas, but really I just want to see the city encourage good behavior. And there's ways to acknowledge this, there's ways to encourage this, because the city doesn't have the enough resources to deal with homelessness, but we can shape what homelessness looks like in Olympia. And I think there's some really amazing people doing that work.
Thank you. I've got John Pettit followed by Lee Miller.
Good evening, council. I um, I'm gonna turn some things around. First of all, I'm not the warm fuzzy guy. I'm the guy who wants to know about the money. Because quite honestly, I could not believe my eyes that here we are two weeks, two weeks since you just passed a new budget and you're already wanting to borrow money for more homeless expense. So the first thing I'm gonna do is go to the end of what I was gonna say is, informally request the city, from the city, a detailed listing of all expenditures made for the emergency declaration and specific appropriation ordinances that provide for payments thereof for budget year 2018. I looked at your new budget. The truth is, you don't have a budget for homeless this next year. You're trying to bring over eighteen, 2018 into 2019. That doesn't work that way and maybe you need to learn about budgeting. When you budget, you're supposed to be making a plan to deal with this next year. You just wanna have an endless bank account without ever declaring the money you're spending. You know, this group of people here, they're not here because they're all happy and fuzzy about what you guys are doing. They're here because they're pissed. They're tired of it. People that aren't safe. The people that are homeless are pissed. They want more. You're setting up seventeen hundred dollars a month for your little houses. That's the monthly maintenance for a single one of your little sheds that you have scheduled. Not good financial decisions. Really bad. So I wanna know about these expenses and I wanna know about what uh, appropriation ordinances you have in place. Now that it's 2019, you can't make a retroactive appropriation ordinance to cover the cost. It's illegal. So, we wanna know, what is it that you need to take all this money from the home fund for? You're stealing from Peter to pay Paul to get by for another day, to make people think you're being nice and generous when you are hurting people by not providing those in need for the things they actually need. Now, I know, we're gonna go forward here, you're gonna be done and you're gonna have, tell them, oh, thank you for making all your wonderful comments. Well, I wanna tell you, we don't wanna hear you say thank you and just give us a little pat on the back because we want you to listen and we want you to do the job you've been hired to do. And hopefully, I won't be attacked by Mr. Hall with some type of a uh, verbal attack or an assault out in the lobby out here after the meeting like he did to my business partner, Mr. Terry Stanley, last week. Thank you.
Thank you. And we will have a moment to, at the end of public comment, to respond to some of these um, comments and allegations. Lee Miller followed by Lisa Gilati.
I wanna thank the council again for all your serious work. Thank you for the mitigation sites. Thank you for the tiny houses. It's not enough, but you're taking this very seriously and I'm grateful. We have people living in misery on our streets, in our doorways, in the woods. I don't own a car and mostly I get around downtown on foot or on a bicycle, um, day or night. Um, I find our current situation disturbing and tragic, but I'm not scared to be out on the streets at night. Walking around downtown, uh, the presence of houseless people with or without a tent or a porta potty is disturbing, but I do have a warm home I go to. I have indoor plumbing and I have a safe place to sleep. I'm not under a tarp. And I'm grateful for that, but the people sleeping on our streets and in our woods have nowhere else to go. We know this. They don't have anywhere to go. We won't have housing for everybody until there's a greater disconnection between real estate and the creation of wealth. If market rates rule, somebody mentioned rent control. If market rates rule, there will only be more people shut out of housing. Housing needs to be a human right.
Thank you. Got Lisa Gilati followed by Richie Mello.
Good evening, Mayor and city council. Um, this, I'm Lisa Gilati and this is my um, wonderful friend and um, associate in Build the Bus Home, Aaron Saura. And uh, I'm here to speak about the human right. And um, recently there was a video that was done and it was done very beautifully. I, I'm just amazed how well he did it. So the, a video will be available if, if anybody wants to see it about Build the Bus Home and Clean Up Bus. We are working on a shower and laundry cleanup bus, uh, mobile infrastructure for hygiene. We'd like to um, thank you for what you're doing and um, ask for your continued support and um, possibly um, businesses to help out. Uh, we're looking for volunteers as well. The reason that this is so important is because for me, I was approached by a woman in a wheelchair and she said, I heard you're gonna have handicap accessible shower in your bus. And I said, yeah, we are. We're gonna modify the back and be able to have a lift to bring you right in, have your own private shower, toilet, and sink. And she was like, wow, that is what I need. And that's what a lot of people need. And we wanna provide that. We're here to make a difference. We're creating community by doing this service. It's gonna be a free service. Our bus, we have two empty buses ready to go. We just need help. And helping comes in many forms. Um, can be administrative, it could be public announcement. It could be radio, TV, it could be anything. It could be just talking to people about the need. The need is great. We all know that. My passion for it is, I, I want to make a difference in this community. I live in Lacey. Aaron lives in Olympia. We have another member that lives in Tomwater. We're working together for Thurston County. We're gonna have mobile buses that will go all over Thurston County, wherever the need is the greatest. And we're gonna, um, we're partnering with um, churches and businesses. So we just are looking for people that want to support our service along the way too, um, providing food and clothing and all other services. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I have one, I've got Richie Mello and I think that's our last speaker tonight.
I'm gonna move this thing forward.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is there another speaker? Thank you, city council for, for having us and uh, thank you also for doing the work that you have done so far with the mitigation camp. I've sat here listening to different sides of the story and hearing people's concerns and uh, I can understand both sides. There are people that are business owners and seniors that are afraid of the homeless and there are the homeless that are afraid of going outside because either being harassed or being attacked. So both are coming at it from the same sides, which is an interesting standpoint to look at. We both live in fear of each other. It's very odd. Why is that? Is that a lack of understanding of each other? Is that a lack of understanding of the human condition? I think anybody at any given time is not far from being in the position that those who are currently homeless, living in the mitigation camps, are experiencing. And it's a very sad topic for me to talk about. It's, it's, it's very difficult, I think, for everybody. I think there's a relatability in this, to see humans suffering. And we can empathize with it equally and still be afraid and fear for our family and fear for our own lives. But we have to understand that if there's anything that we can be angry at, it's not each other. It's a lack of support systems that are helping these people recover. When we're down and out, the whole point of a society, the whole point of government, is to help people get back up. We all fall, but that does not mean that we should stay there. We all deserve equal opportunities to get back up. Each and every one of us in this room has the capability of doing something great with our lives. And although we may be misled or dragged down the wrong path due to circumstances outside of our own, even our own doing, that does not mean that we should stay there. We need to utilize our base. We need to empower them. I would love to see not just mitigation camps. I would love to see these people have jobs, an opportunity for growth, education, access to healthcare, I mean, we all need healthcare, but um, access to healthcare equally. These people can support us. They are not different than us. These people can support our system. We can provide for them and they will do the same. We need to stop treating them like they're something different. They are human. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I've neglected, I missed one more person, Robert Bruce, and that will be our last speaker.
Hi. Things are always changing, all the time, but you don't always see uh, people packing meetings and organizing turnouts like this. I think this is because most of the time, people don't really think they can make a difference, that anyone with the power will listen to them. I'm glad to see lots of people here tonight, people who might not agree on the way forward. If we're going to have a big, significant moment, it's better if the community is present and involved in the change. That includes people who are concerned about safety downtown. You're a part of this too. I just want to ask those of you who are concerned for your safety, what would you like us as a community to do? Because I feel a lot of apprehension about calls for greater safety that don't acknowledge the need to have specific discussions about the usual solutions and how they have failed in the past and truly advocating for us all. When a community calls for safety but doesn't have these conversations, we have a tendency to fall back to displacement, to criminalization of groups and basic human behaviors. We all deserve to be judged by our own actions and not those of others who look like us. Not everyone should have to be an expert on best practices regarding homelessness or know everything we must do. Some people just want to express that they feel unsafe. That's okay. But I think it's also fair to say that. At some point, we have to move to specifics and the conversation about what safety means for us as a community should be had as a community, not kept vague, to be decoded by city staff and police. We know where that goes and our neighbors living outside deserve better. If you support displacement, say so. If you support other solutions, also say so. We need to be in a problem-solving mode and people aren't problems. People have problems. We need to recognize that the revolving door of criminalizing mental illness and poverty is no solution at all. We need state involvement and more help from other cities in the county. Folks in Olympia aren't more compassionate than people in other communities. We've just come to see the problem more clearly, more quickly, because it is all at our doorstep and has been for years. The solution is for us to come together, all kinds of people, and work to really help each other. Because when other communities see people with good hearts, people they can't just write off as political opportunists, taking action and trying to make a difference, that's inspiring. That's how we really figure this out. Thanks.
Thank you. So that concludes tonight's public comment. Uh, here it is. And now, before I go to uh, council feedback, I wanted to ask our city manager to respond to the budget issue that was brought up by one of the speakers about our appropriations for um, our homeless services.
So I'm not entirely clear what you were saying. I will tell you that we did spend some money on homeless services in 2018 and we can account for those and we do have a budget which will be published in your 2019 budget for how we will spend money in 2019 going forward. Uh, if anyone has- in 2019 going forward. If anyone has a request for information, then we do need them to make a special public records request formally through the city rather than at a public meeting. So I would encourage any speakers to do that, rather than just list what they want at the microphone.
Okay. Thanks for that clarification. We're trying to, you know, some, you know, people can come up and say whatever they'd like to say, and a lot of times, we'd like to clarify that with what the city really is doing. So I wanted to address that one. So who would like to make some comments? I've got some, but I'll go start with Mayor Protem Bateman.
Thank you, Mayor Selby. Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. It's not this often that we, or not very often, that we get a packed room like this. So I really appreciate everyone sticking it out and providing comments on both sides of the issue, both for, in support of all the work that we've been doing to mitigate homelessness and provide safe places for people, and for folks that are asking for a balanced approach and saying that they're afraid of being downtown. And I appreciate both perspectives. The story that really impacted me was that of Robert Coit and the food bank. And I think after, is Robert still here, if he'll leave? Not long ago, I had the opportunity to actually volunteer at the food bank with Thurston County through a work trip that we had. And I was really surprised by how many people utilize the services of that food bank in any given day. And to hear of folks not going there and being afraid, I think we can all, I work downtown. I'm not afraid of going downtown. I'm there every single day. But we have to acknowledge that that fear or perception can lead to impacting people's behavior. And when we have a nonprofit organization that is dedicated to feeding people in Thurston County, and they're having the challenge of people having this perception of safety, that impacts that organization. And the bottom line is that it's impacting the people that they're serving and people not having access to food in Thurston County. So we have to acknowledge that. I heard some of you acknowledging a perception or a fear of safety in our downtown. And I will say that our actions this year have been directly targeted to providing people with safe places to be, in recognition that not everyone has access to a home, that we don't have enough shelter beds in our community. And we have done due diligence to provide safe places for people to be. So we, through the mitigation site, through increased shelter, I'll go through that later, so we can manage unsanctioned camping areas and return that smart lot to being a smart lot as soon as possible. In this last year alone, your advocacy efforts through Just Housing and others have helped us take a number of actions to help individuals that are unhoused in our community, including the Plum Street Village, the mitigation site, a partnership with faith-based organizations to help them foster tiny villages on their properties. We also passed the Home Fund, which is going to be bringing in $2.3 million a year. It started last July. And in first quarter of this year, we're going to be going forward with an RFP, hopefully, for our first permanent supportive housing project. We are also currently looking at additional sites for a second mitigation site, so we can provide people places to be. I will say that we remain the only city in Thurston County with shelter beds, other than Yelm that has five. And we need you to take your advocacy efforts, as evidenced here tonight, to Thurston County. Because I can tell you, with all of the work that we have done, it will not be a sustainable system for providing places for people to be if we do not have support at the county. They have not provided any places for people to camp. They are not offering any shelter beds. So all of the work that we did with the Home Fund, it would not have passed had you not been supporting it and provided your advocacy efforts. It wouldn't have happened without people demanding that. We won't get help from the county unless you ask for it. So I asked you, right now, will you go to the county and use the advocacy efforts that you used tonight to come here to tell us the one city that has done more than any other city in Thurston County? Will you go to the county and ask them for help, too? Because we need it. We have 350 people camping in our downtown right now. We need help. And we are doing everything that we can. So please, if you have any questions about the process, or where those meetings take place, or what to do, or how to do it, or how to talk to them, we're here to help you, but we do need your help. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Jones.
Thank you, Mayor Selby. Well, I think I actually agree with Mr. Pettit this evening for the first time in a long time. Mr. Pettit came to us and told us that there are strong feelings in this room, and there are a lot of different opinions. And there's no question about that. I want to acknowledge that the truth that each one of you carries should be respected. And I want to just honor what you've come to tell us, because I know that there are feelings and emotions and experiences behind your truth. I also was moved by Mr. Coit's comments. He told us strong leadership is needed. And I think that what is happening in his employment site, in that part of our community, is not just happening to his employees, but it's happening to many, many people in our downtown. There is fear. There are concerns. There's discomfort. And it isn't just fear of each other. It's fear of the future. There's uncertainty. Where are we going with this situation? But I also want to acknowledge that progress is being made. I actually feel as though the city is making great strides, not fast enough for most of us, but there is improvement. I feel like we're caught in this firestorm of federal and local legal actions, obvious human suffering, and then those collateral impacts that are affecting the entire county. These are the most complex issues, affordable housing and homelessness, the most complex issues, not just facing Olympia, facing our state, and facing many states across our country. And the underlying cause is economic inequality, which is a pervasive national issue. So it was said tonight, and I want to agree, that it's been our past practice. It hasn't been that long ago that the way that Olympia addressed homeless camps was through sweeps. We uprooted encampments when they became too visible, or when we received complaints. And that policy kept the problem hidden by pushing individuals and families into the woods. And over the years, the sweeps and cleanups have been extremely expensive and ineffective. Now, with a new federal court ruling, the costs of responding to homelessness actually haven't spiked. It hasn't been that huge of a change. The real costs that we're seeing are the collateral impacts on our community by having homelessness in our face on our downtown. The unmanaged encampments on public property are seriously affecting the viability of our community. Again, I want to emphasize, though, that this city is taking steps. We are making progress, but we're doing that within a context. And I'm just going to throw out some statistics quickly, so bear with me. The average rent for an apartment in Thurston County changed from 2017 to 2018. It increased by 15%. The average rent went up 15% in one year. 2018 was the first year since 2012 that the average rent for an apartment in Thurston County exceeded the average rent for an apartment in Pierce County. It is more expensive to rent an apartment in Thurston County than Pierce County. And it was the fifth consecutive year that the average apartment rent has increased in Thurston County. So that 17% was just last year, but for five years in a row, rents have been going up. Now, what I've found is, by doing just a little research, is that the face of homelessness is changing quite a bit. We used to think of a homeless person as an antisocial hermit who could be dangerous and was to be avoided. Today, homeless people are those who have been living at the bottom of the income schedule for a long time. They've been on the precipice, and they have fallen off into homelessness. And they are often women and children in our community. We need to change our thinking about homeless people are. I talked recently with some folks in the building industry, and they told me that for the past six years at least, Thurston County building of housing, of residential units, is falling behind what the market would normally absorb by 600 units a year. That's 600 families per year that could have been housed but are not because our building industry can't keep up. So we need an additional mitigation site. We need to be able to move folks out of unmanaged camps, out of unsafe camps, and into really basic hygiene, organized encampments. Frankly, our mitigation site is a relatively low cost compared to other strategies. And then we need to move people forward to a better pathway in life by giving them opportunities. And that is not easy. We know that these are complex life situations that people are in, and each individual has a different story. We heard that tonight. And so it will take multiple strategies. So I just want to come back to where I started by saying, the fears that you feel, the concerns that you feel for our community, I just want to honor those and respect them. They are all correct. What you're feeling is right because it's based on your experience. And thank you for coming and sharing.
Thank you. Councilmember Rollins.
Thank you so much, Mayor Selby. Okay, I got to exhale. Thank you, everybody, for coming out. The kind of courage it shows to come here and speak your truth is part of what makes me so proud to be part of this community and part of what gives me hope that we can continue to come back together despite differences of vision that clearly exist in the room and out in the foyer for those folks out there. I'm just, I'm so glad that the conversations are happening. And I always, my hope is always that, especially when it's a large turnout, that you see this as not just you communicating with us, but that people are hearing each other. And I, and I think that that's happening. I want to go in a bit of a different direction. There's a lot of the comments I heard tonight touched on a topic I've been thinking about as well, and also in reading the Facebook conversations about the state of downtown and such. And start with a personal story. So this goes back to 1986, probably. I was three, four years old. And I was at the Kmart. I was like riding in the back of the cart like they used to let us do before the reliability is concerned. So just standing in the back of the cart, and my parents, we were in the checkout line, and an elderly couple that was in front of us said to me, smiled and said, "Hi there," or something like that. Pretty normal interaction, right? Except from that, at that point, I panicked. I yelled, screamed. I was gripping the cart with tight knuckles. And I was so afraid that those two friendly people were going to take me away from my family. Maybe an unusual response. And maybe some of that is just my own personal nervous system. But some of that is also social conditioning, because my parents, and I love them to death, but they were very into the stranger danger thing. And I was always running through scenarios of like, what to do if this happened, what to do if a stranger says hello, even. And I share that story because it's not just my story. I think increasingly, we're recognizing that it is our story. We are a nation of anxiety. And because that was such an impactful story in my development, I've spent a lot of time thinking about the experience of fear and anxiety and noticing when it surfaces in communities and in myself, and wondering about who benefits from that kind of fear. You know, just backing up, I mean, they've surveyed college students. And from 2008 to 2017, the number of students with diagnosable anxiety more than doubled, just over 10 years. That's actually been shown generation upon generation, the last 50, 60 years. We're increasingly fearful, even though crime is going down. Another study in the New England, someone, a researcher, a researching student, followed the habits of children and how far they were allowed to walk in their neighborhood, and what they were allowed to do unsupervised, and then went and back to that same neighborhood with a lot of the same, those children growing up, and followed what their children were allowed to do. And we're just, the fear is so much stronger. And it's really hard to explain, because in that community, like so many, violent crime has gone down. And that's not to discount when scary things do happen. It's just something that I notice and something that I wonder. I wonder who benefits from this over fear. And I think certainly Amazon benefits over small businesses, the fact that a lot of us are afraid to go and take care of business in our own communities. I think politicians benefit off of divisive language a lot of times. And ultimately, who loses is all of us. It's hard for me to explain to myself why some people in this community can walk through the same downtown and have just such very different perceptions of what's going on. And I don't have an answer for that. We heard from a couple older women speakers who said they go downtown and feel fine all the time. I know I feel safe downtown generally. But that's obviously not universal. So I'm just putting that out. It's not an answer. It's really more of a question. I do believe the solutions to these problems are going to be found in having the courage to get close to them and to be able to hear the people that are most directly impacted by homelessness, by addiction. We can't be coming up with solutions without getting close enough to understand. And I think we have an opportunity here in Olympia to do it differently. And it starts and it ends with these kinds of conversations and hearing each other out. So once again, thank you, and I'm so proud to be a member of this community and to be a representative on council.
Thank you. Councilmember Partially, followed by Councilmember Gilman.
I know that John Pettit didn't want us to thank you, but I do thank you. And I think that every voice in this community is important. I want to acknowledge what Councilmember Bateman pointed out. We need help. And as Councilmember Gilman has said in the past, we're an uncharted territory. We are trying. That's the most important thing. We're trying. And will we do this perfectly? No. Will we get some of it wrong? Yes. Will we do some of it right? Yes. I wrote something the other day, and if you'll bear with me, my dyslexia and jumping over words, it sort of goes to what I think this community is feeling. And we need lots of voices looking for this solution, seeking constructive change. We need to be able to engage in healthy debate and allow healthy disagreements to shape ideas into solid solutions. To begin with, we need to acknowledge that we are a community suffering a common trauma. We are a community suffering the trauma of houselessness and homeless crisis, a crisis that ripples out from those who will spend the night outside in the cold, out into our entire community. None of us like seeing humans suffering, seeing crime, seeing messes downtown. Now, we have to imagine living in it. In this state of trauma, our thinking brain can slow, and our emotions and tempers can flare. We are a community at risk of reacting with emotion instead of responding with compassion tempered with intellect. I'm equally guilty of all of that. As a matter of fact, the other night, I was walking from my home to my car, and on the back stoop of my house was a gentleman sitting out of the rain. My first instincts were to tell him to leave. This is my house. And then I remembered something that Richie also kind of pointed out, something my grandfather told me. When you meet someone, learn their name, because they will no longer be a stranger. And unless we know their name, it becomes easy to make them an evil person, easy to revile them, easy to assign motivations and beliefs that potentially they do not have. Unless we know their name, we can make that person our enemy. So I walked up to this gentleman, and instead of saying, "Get off my back stoop. This is my house," I said, "What's your name?" So, "Michael, if you're out there, you can use my back stoop, because you left it clean in the morning, and I really appreciate..." in the morning, and I really appreciate that." I really encourage everybody on all sides of this issue, whether you don't have a house tonight, or whether you do, go up and learn someone's name because it becomes a lot harder to make that person your enemy.
Thank you, Councilmember Gilman.
Thank you, Mayor Selby. I'm not convinced that there were two sides represented, all right? I, I think that the, the work we have in front of us and the facilitated process we're going to begin this winter, our homelessness response planning, is about how do we address the, the concerns that Wanda and Jackie and Brienne raised alongside the experience of folks like Walker, who spent week after week in that, the tent camp right on State Avenue and had all kinds of interesting interactions with good people who were in there, right? How do, there's room in this, in this, this task that's before us. We're not going to solve homelessness. And I think it's ridiculous that the counties have a 10-year plan to end homelessness. It's just, it's absurd, right? It's, it's, um, in the 1890s, when there was the first economic panic with the early settlers here, Governor Rogers had a chance, the guy who's the statue in the middle, Sylvester Park, had a chance to write a little pamphlet about homelessness in Olympia. And he said, "It's not about houses, it's about people being poor," right? And that that's a decision that's been made in the way we've set things up. But it's not really at the ci, we don't, at the city, we don't have a lot of control over how land is owned, how taxes are created. We're, we're kind of, we're at the end where it's all of us. We're the most accessible form of government. You're here, we're here, we're a community. How do we manage in a world that's increasingly inequitable, in a world where more people don't have enough money to put a roof over their head, and in a, a world where we turn away and don't offer services to people who are crying out for services, right? That's, that's our job is to manage. And that's the plan we're, we're working on, is a plan to manage the situation we have in front of us, to make it so that downtown is safe and welcoming for everybody, and that as a community, we're pulling together to provide the basic human needs for everybody in town. I, I was really struck with Mr. Mellow, which is also an awesome name, by the way. Mr. Mellow's observation that we live in fear of each other, and that that's, that's a truth right now. But it's, it's a situation that we can, we can take, we can take that on head-on. I don't know that we can create fair taxes. I don't know that we can un-poor people who don't have any money in their pocket. But I'm confident that we can work on how we relate to each other downtown and whether we live in fear of each other. This weekend, on Saturday, council had an opportunity to visit both the new mitigation site, the Union Gospel Mission managed location, and the tent community on State Avenue and have a visit through those. And I was really struck. I, I hung out in the, the community tent at the mitigation site and had a visit with several people who are living there. And what, what struck me is that the tidiness of that site is not because there are public officials in insisting on it. We did provide some resources, right? We provided pallets to put the tents up off the water, we provided dumpsters. But those people divided up into shifts. They had safety shifts, and they had policing the grounds, cleaning up shifts, and they set some pretty strict rules for themselves, that at 10 o'clock, it's quiet time and guests leave, and that if your stuff's out, by the end of the day, someone else is going to pick it up and put it in the dumpster. And that's, that's the kinds of choices they made when we gave them just a little bit of breathing room, a little bit of dignity, so they could stop and think and have a conversation with each other. So I hope that we can all stop and think and have a conversation across the next several months. And I, I really do hope that you'll join us in our, our process to, to plan for how we continue to respond, and that you'll invite your friends and neighbors to participate. Thank you for coming out tonight.
All right. I was sitting here thinking, I think we had a longer response to public comment than actual public comment. Thank you for sitting through that, though. That was great. So you, you see, we've given this a lot of thought. Our staff, it's like all hands on deck. Everybody is so engaged in trying to find solutions. And I say that, that, that's not a singular solution. It's solutions. There's no one population, there's no one face of homelessness, and we're understanding that more and more. I would ask for patience and grace as well. And, and there's no other city in Thurston County that's doing as much to try and find solutions. And like Mayor Protem Bateman said, not just the county needs to hear about this, Lacy and Tombwater need to hear about this. There's no shelter beds in our neighboring cities. So they are very comfortable with letting us carry that water for them, and that's not sustainable anymore. I also want to speak to the, the folks that were here talking about their fear of being downtown. And I, I don't feel like it's my role to tell you what is scary and what's not to you. Perceptions are real, and you, and you need to understand that a lot of those folks are the un, the mentally ill and the ones that have, that are the most in need of care and the least amount of resources that we have to help those folks, right? The mental health system is in disarray. It's been, you know, in disarray for a generation. And like I say a lot of times, it took us a generation to get into this mess, and it's going to take us a generation to get out. There's no quick solutions. I do believe in balancing compassion with accountability, and I think our first mitigation site is a perfect example of when you give people some basic rules and let them have, be engaged in their own dignity and how they decide that they want to live together, that they will choose a, a higher level of rules than you would even give them. So I'm hopeful with that. We're looking for another site. It will be outside of downtown as much as I can control that. And, and folks that need other services will hope to keep engaging with our mobile mental health outreach that we didn't talk about yet. But there's, there's now on the street, mental health outreach efforts that we have in place, and there's all, a whole spectrum of services to get people attached to, to a better, a better life. So with that, thank you again so much. Don't give up on us. Keep checking out the, the website and stay engaged. We have a whole community process this year around a homeless response plan, and we need to hear your voices. So thank you. So with that, we are on to council reports, and I'll start with a, a quick report on the loss this last week of a dear, dear friend to Olympia, and that would be the former chairman of the Squawson Island Tribe, David Lopman. He died last Wednesday at age 75, and his memorial service was held last weekend on Sunday. We can never forget his contributions to the tribe's growth and economy. And like I had mentioned before, the partnership that we've been able to form with our, not only our Squawson neighbors, but our Nisqually neighbors, has been one of the most gratifying parts of, of my service with the city. And his loss will be greatly, greatly missed in our relationships. So, that. Wanted to also report out that council met for a council retreat this last weekend, and we, in addition to setting our calendar and setting our priorities, we shifted around some of our council assignments and as well picked a new mayor pro tem. And I would like to welcome Jess Bateman as our new mayor pro tem, and I have somebody checking this out. I think it's historic to have a female mayor and a female mayor pro tem. So it's pretty, pretty cool. So with that, I'll go down to my left, Councilmember Rollins.
All right, thank you. Just reporting on the Community Investment Partnership meeting, which was yesterday. And the two big things that came out of that were, first, that we, the CIP formally requested of Commissioner Hutchings, who's on our board, to make, to essentially make a motion to the commissioners at their next meeting to allow the county, the home and housing dollars that go through the county to come back to CIP so that all of the local jurisdictions have a part in that process, a well-defined part. And they will be doing that. They will be making the motion. So the next time they meet is January 29th, and assuming that at least two commissioners go for that route, then that money will be back in the Community Investment Partnership. And our CIP retreat is February 11th. And at that point, we would be discussing the transparent process for that RFP to go out for those dollars. That was the big item as well. It sounds like the South County cities of Rainier, Tenai, O'Yelm, and the town of Bucota will be re-upping their membership. They're going to be using their CDBG dollars. And that is it, unless any questions?
Any questions for Councilmember Rollins, Council, uh, Mayor Protem Bateman?
Thank you. Have you identified your priorities for 2019 funding, yep, for housing or the social service dollars? Or is that going to happen at a next meeting?
At the CIP? Yeah. That would be at the retreat if that's what happens. Of course, it would, we expect it would go along with the five-year plan.
Sure. It'd be great to advocate for fully funding our coordinated entry system and vulnerability-based if you all are going to be able to have an influence on the housing decisions again.
Thank you. All right, it's Mayor Protem Bateman.
Thank you. I have nothing to report.
Councilmember Jones.
Thank you, Mayor Selby. Well, I want to thank my councilmates for another valuable retreat. I really appreciate the time that we spent together. We got a lot done, and I feel good about the outcome. I think it was an important moment in the life of the council as we look ahead to the next year. We had time to set some priorities and to share ideas about our individual attributes and how we'll work together in the year ahead. I've had an excellent experience as mayor pro tem for the past seven years. And while I'm about, I'm wistful about stepping down, I know that it's the right decision for me to make at this time. Mayor Selby and I have worked well together for the past three years, setting the agenda for the city, and now we'll move into a new relationship. And I'll be able to take on the role of an independent council, council member representing our citizens. So I'm excited about this new phase. I'm confident that, that Mayor Protem Bateman will do her best to keep lines of communication open and flowing, and that she'll be a good mayor pro tem. So best wishes to you, Jess. And I'm looking forward to the summary report of the product, products of the retreat. I assume those are coming forward. The other piece of my report is on a meeting of the Thurston Regional Planning Council. It was January 4th. There are really only two things to, to highlight this evening. The first was a presentation on intercity transit's bus buddies. We were briefed on a program that links experienced bus rider volunteers to others in the community to remove barriers to accessing intercity transit services. And then the other piece was a report out from the South Sound Military and Communities Partnership. It was an economic analysis and regional survey. They started with a problem statement to determine the economic impact of the JBLM workforce on the South Sound. And the numbers are astounding. They looked at just the operating budget of JBLM, the operating budget of Madigan Hospital, the payroll for JBM, JBLM personnel, and then the defense contracts that move to contractors in our region for JBLM. Let me just give you those numbers. It's astounding to me. Operating budget of JBLM, nearly $700 million. Operating budget of Madigan Hospital, $600 million. The payroll, nearly $5 billion, and defense contracts of about $660 million. That's a total of about $6.8 billion coming into our region from JBLM. And that's before you do the sort of multiplier effect that economic development professionals tell us about money circulating through the economy. It's just amazing to me, the impact that that federal spending to the north of us has. And then the other piece that I wanted to pass on is about transitioning service members, people who retire out at JBLM. Half of them retire into our community, into our region, into the South Sound. And the main reason that they stay is that they see employment prospects here more than where they came from, wherever their home originally was, and they see strong economic growth between Seattle and Olympia. The other reasons they stay is because of the quality life, quality of life in the Pacific Northwest. And the majority of them, 80% of them, plan to enter the workforce after retirement. And that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Councilmember Jones, Mayor Protem Bateman?
Thank you, Mayor Selby. I just want to thank former Mayor Protem Jones for your seven years of service on this council as a liaison between the mayor and the council, and your due diligence to work with both of us. So thank you so much.
You bet.
And I concur with that. Councilmember Gilman.
Thank you. The Transportation Policy Board met last Wednesday morning, and just a couple of items to flag for you. One was, we had a presentation on the City of Lacy's recently adopted pedestrian and bicycle plan, and I both want to congratulate them and recognize that, that good work they put together, and also recognize the work of our transportation planners kind of paving the way for a lot of what they put in place. It was, it was, it was really nice to see the plan. And then the other intriguing item that we'll just put in the back burner here is that the Department of Transportation, actually, the governor's transportation budget, the proposal for this year includes Puget Sound-wide ferry service study money. And I just, I, I think that's going to be an interesting conversation. As long as there's slow boats, I'm okay with it, right? Sailboats, preferably. And, and then the, the one other meeting I wanted to highlight was the, uh-oh, I just lost the name. The Council of Neighborhood Associations met last night and received several briefings, but, but also tried something new and had a, pulled the tables away and had a conversation in a circle about what's going on in your neighborhood, what should we be working on? And there was one particular idea that came up that was, it was pretty interesting, and that was the emergency planning map that we have on our emergency services, emergency response page on the city website. A couple of neighborhoods had taken that up and gone door-to-door to get together a house party and made a neighborhood emergency plan. Who's going to check in with whose kids, where is their water, you know, just, just had a plan ahead of time. And it was a great excuse to get together with neighbors and, and just make a connection also, even if Moses is wrong about the volcano erupting. So that was, that was a, a great meeting last night. And, and then last, I just want to say that I'm going to not be here next week, but I'll, I'll miss you, but I'll see you next time.
All right. Thanks for the heads up. And I was just looking up as you were talking about the neighborhood plans, see if Greg Wright, our, our fire chief, was in the room, because he would have made his day talking about all that emergency planning.
He's coming in.
There he is. See that smile? All right. So if you want to find out more information about those emergency planning documents, and they're, they're available, right? Aren't they, Greg, on our website? If you want to have a neighborhood plan, is there a way that they can find out more about that on the, oh, come on up?
His ears were burning.
Yes.
My ears were burning in the other, other part of the room here. I'm Greg Wright, Fire Chief. Yes, we have an emergency management educator. We have an emergency management page on the, within the fire department's webpage that you can get information there. Or you can call us at the main fire station, and we'll get you hooked up with that kind of help to get you pointed in the right direction. There are many resources available online, but it's nice to get a little bit of help to kind of go towards the right one and then organize from there.
Right. Do we have like toolkits available?
Yes, we do. And we have a person that can help you, help instruct you through that.
Awesome. All right, so check out the fire department's website.
Right. So the city's website, go to the fire department page, and there's an emergency management section there.
Beautiful. Thank you. All right, Councilmember Partially.
I have only one meeting to report on, and that's the Parking and Business PPI group I was with. Primarily, they spent time working on their work plan for the year, but we also did get an update on the mitigation camps and the homelessness response from Colin and Amy. It was very good. They also got the new getting to work for downtown employees options, which is a map of all the parking areas that you can park long-term, as well as the nine-hour parking. It's on our website. And I just want to say a shout-out to the small business owners that join, are part of this. They're an incredibly caring group of people that are fairly conflicted by this homelessness crisis with a lot of compassion and are also seeking solutions. So I think those who would like to engage them in conversation should really reach out. They're wonderful people.
Any questions for Council- Any questions for Councilmember Partially? And keep shopping downtown. It's not going to get any, it's likely feeling safer if you don't, if people stop coming downtown. So it's not fair to our businesses. They're resilient, but they really, really need your support right now, so thanks for that. City manager, Steve Hall.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Two items to report. First, in terms of scheduling, next week, we're planning to bring you your new city council assignments for inter-jurisdictional reports and your annual calendar for your consideration. And as soon as we get the retreat report, the draft, from the consultant Nancy Campbell, we'll bring that forward also for the council. My second report has to do with a conference call today from our Congressman Denny Heck. And Denny made available an opportunity for city managers and mayors in his legislative district to learn about the ongoing federal government shutdown. So I thought I'd just share a few highlights with you and the public about what Congressman Heck was able to share. So I'll be quick. This is the 25th day of the federal government shutdown. There are 800,000 federal employees who did not receive a paycheck this week. Of those 11,000 people, 11,000 of those employees work and live in Washington State. Congress has actually passed, the Congress, the House, and the Senate, 12 spending bills to fund every agency in the federal government. Five of those were signed by the President, seven of those were not signed, only one is in dispute, that's the budget of homeland security. The other six that have not been signed are not in dispute by the Senate or the House or the President. Some of the impacts on South Sound that Congressman Heck shared is he's hearing from farmers who are working through USDA, who've had either loans that they're working on that have been withheld, or they've payments because of the ongoing trade war with China are also being withheld, so farmers are not getting their payments. IRS services are being curtailed. If you have anything complicated or questions about your tax returns, even though they will be honoring returns, if you have any questions, it's hard to get through, and many of the services in the IRS are cut back. There are longer and growing lines at airports, as most unpaid TSA employees are choosing not to go to work or find other jobs. And Congressman Heck gave us a chance also to share local impacts. So the one that council is aware of is that the city has made, had required to make an inter-fund loan to ourselves because our CDBG, Community Development Block Grant money from the federal government has not come through. So in order to continue some of our housing rehab programs and our small business assistance programs, we've had to borrow money from ourselves to make up for the federal government not making their required payments. Congressman Heck went on to say that the House and Senate have both asked for the entire 1.6, they both approved the entire $1.6 billion that the President requested for border security. That is a heavy investment in technology, especially drug-detecting equipment. So again, I'll say that the President asked for $1.6 billion in border security, the House and the Senate both approved that. So why the debate? After the congressional action, the President has now increased his request to $5.7 billion, and that's where the dispute lies. So there is unfortunately no end in sight for the shutdown, and so Congressman Heck asks us to keep him informed of local impacts of the federal government shutdown, which we will do. That's all I have, unless there are questions.
All right. Any questions for city manager? I'm glad, oh, Councilmember Gilman?
Did, did you talk at all on that conference call about the number of contracted-out workers? Because I believe that's a sizable share of the federal workforce, or contracted people who aren't being paid.
We did not. So he left open the door to ask questions, I will ask that question.
All right. Well, my son says he's good on savings until about March 1st, then he's in deep doo-doo.
So there's a real local impact, right there.
There's a local impact. All right. So we are done with our regular agenda. What we are going to be doing now is recessing to an executive session to discuss real estate. We'll be meeting upstairs on the fourth floor for no longer than 45 minutes, at the conclusion of which, we will be adjourned for the evening.